We'll call the meeting to order. This is the Rutland Town Regular Select Board Meeting for November 7th. What is it, 2023? And we just finished a fire committee meeting. We have all of the select board members present. Kurt Hathaway, Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Getty, and Sharon Russell. And let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States Mayor and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Too much stuff here. Let's see, we have a birthday coming up this week. First things first, important things. Carrie, is it your birthday later this week? Oh, happy birthday. Congratulations. So everybody, make sure you thank or recognize our town clerk's birthday on Thursday, I think it is? You think it's right. Okay, very good. All right.
You're not going to get out of it.
Nope, 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 nope. Okay. So we'll start with the approval of the Select Board Minutes for the last meeting, which is October 24th.
Move to approve.
Motion's made to approve and seconded. Discussion, additions, deletions, corrections. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All vote aye as well. And I'm going to circulate that one. Okay, we got any board member announcements? No from Kurt, no from Joe, or he's ignoring me. Sharon, no announcements. Matt, no announcements. Okay. Update from the chair, we just had a fire committee meeting to work on the budget. Just a reminder to, hi Dave. All department heads now, you should be scheduling meetings, committees should be scheduling meetings with department heads so we can get the budgets pulled together tonight. Hopefully, we will take some time and figure out what percentage increase we will agree to for across the board salaries in the town. Okay. November 15th, it's just next week, I believe, is the deadline for the circle. So department heads and others interested, get your articles in. November 15th is the deadline. Okay. And next, so we're at the point where we take questions or public comments from the floor about things going on in town that we should be aware of. Dave?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you introduce yourself? Come on up and tell us your interest.
Well, yeah. David Rosenblum, former chairman of the Killington Planning Commission, but please don't hold that against me. And yeah, I'm sort of familiar with your meetings. In ski school, Charlie Shields, some of you might remember, was my supervisor. He, fair warning, he taught me how to be honorary. So it's fair warning. But yeah, I served on the Regional Planning Commission for Killington and on the Transportation Committee. And about three years ago, I moved to up to Rutland Town, up to around Pittsburgh, Carriage Run. And I'm a lawyer, my office is in Killington. Again, don't hold that against me.
Have a seat.
Well, I can, you know.
Well, the speaker is there, so that way.
That way, okay. So I sold my house in Killington, found one down here and moved here. And I really got a, I have, it's been a good three years, I'm very impressed with the highway department that comes up and plows my road. And it takes care of things. I don't know if it's the police department or not, but they, somebody chased away the witch that was on Route 7 at the bottom of the road.
Okay.
I don't know if you noticed that. There was a witch haunting the woods. Actually, Tom Resett and his buddy had put that up. If you stopped to take a picture out of it, it's gone now, but when you stopped to take a picture out of it, walked up to it, it spoke to you. But yeah, I took a picture of it, it kind of reminded me of an old girlfriend, but we won't go there. But other than that, Mary suggested that I should be an alternate for the Regional Planning Commission, and I would be willing to do that.
So you'll remember that we had a sheet of positions that we haven't filled. The Rutland Regional Board of Commissioners. Dave, sorry, Fred Nicholson is our delegate, but I think you also, were you in ski school with Dave or Fred?
With Charlie.
With Charlie, okay.
Charlie. And I know Fred from the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
And we used to have verbal duels.
I bet you did. I bet you did. So we appear to have someone who is interested in serving as our alternate on the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. What do you think?
Move to appoint.
Motion's been made to appoint. Dave, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? Cross-examination?
You know what you're getting into.
Yeah, you do.
Oh, I know what I'm getting into, and I have some very high boots.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I know.
Nice to have somebody that wants to volunteer.
Your interest, I know, it was great. So all in favor of appointing Dave Rosenblum to the, as our alternate for the Rutland Regional Board of Commissioners, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Doesn't get better than that. Thank you very much.
One question while I'm here, which is.
You don't get paid, if that was it, you don't get paid.
Do I get a free dinner? Probably not. But something that's been haunting me for years, Diamond Run Mall.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion about turning it into housing? It's been done elsewhere.
I have had a member of the City Board of Alderman tell us that's what we should do. So that.
Not up to us, that's the problem.
That's right, it's private property, so.
Yeah, but could we turn the screws with the owners? Make a suggestion to them?
We have not visited with the owners in quite a long time, and that might be a very good thing to do.
Do we have an architect or an engineer available to us that could take a look and say how practical it would be?
We do have an architect and an engineer. Right now, they're occupied with building our new fire police station and a few other projects, but I appreciate your thoughts and suggestions, and it's probably about time we invited the Diamond Run Mall folks in for a visit.
See if you can get the engineer and the architect to voice an opinion.
See. Okay. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Lyle, Olivia? Do you have white chocolate?
Well, in fact.
Very good.
We're told if we're coming to ask for money, that we should bring something. Not to miss a beat, we found a thing that you have to share.
I will share, thank you very much.
That's taken out of the regional marketing fund, just so you know.
I wonder why.
So we appreciate a moment of your time. We come just about the same time every year to say just about the same thing. And we appreciate your support for, we hope this will be the eighth year of Rutland Town supporting the regional marketing initiative. You've been with us from the very beginning, as have other towns. We have some documents to quickly show you. Olivia will walk you through them just to show you where we are now and what we would like to do in the coming year. And we'll entertain any questions you have, including questions you might have about the Diamond Run Mall.
Yeah, okay.
Not that I've got anything big to say. So we'll just pass this out.
Thank you.
Walk you through just what's in here very quickly, because I know you've got a lot on your agenda.
So we had last year in our warning, we had the sum of $4,054 to the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Regional Region. That's what we're here to talk about now.
That is exactly it.
Okay, gotcha.
So we have been asking municipalities to support us with basically a dollar per person in their towns. You'll see in a budget on the right-hand side here, just past the statistics that Olivia will walk you through, where we generate our revenue for the program, and then how we spend that. And we'd like to kind of jump to the statistics, because what we feel is happening right now is that we are finding some pretty decent success. And like anyone that markets, you need to keep marketing, keep marketing, keep marketing. We continued to do that through the pandemic. There was a lot of movement into the state during the pandemic.
Yeah.
And Olivia's got some statistics that are on that two-page piece that she'll walk you through right now, if you'll allow us to do that.
Please. So obviously, not everyone who moves to the area of Vermont uses Real Rutland, but of those that we are talking to, there are a lot, and they are finding really good jobs here, and they're finding housing eventually. It takes a little while, but the sheet right here shows that it basically takes you 2021, a lead is just someone who's interested, someone who's thinking about moving to the region. We had 664 in 2022. It did take a dip, 562, but in 2023, so far this year, we've had 1,484 people. This is in part because we have pushed our marketing much further because of the money that has been allocated from the towns, municipalities, businesses, and we are now hosting weekend getaways, which bring four families to the area. We hook them up with realtors, with schools, with people who are actually in the community, and this reaches about, well, it reaches over half a million people on social media. Of all of those people who have actually moved here, in 2021, we had 86 people, 75 of them actually moved to Rutland County. These were a lot of those COVID movers, the people who were fleeing. In 2022, it was expensive, there weren't as many homes on the market, so it dropped to 39 people who moved to Rutland County. But if you flip over, so far in 2023, we've had 48 people move to the county. Four people are planning on moving by the end of the year, and in 2024, there are already six who have plans to come in next year. So we know this does work. About 80% of the people who are moving here are moving to either Rutland City or Rutland Town. So you take a majority of it, and they are taking really good jobs at Rutland Regional, at Velco, GE, United Way, all over the spectrum. We have teachers, lawyers, engineers.
And the purpose, if you rewind the tape all the way to the beginning, was that we had businesses that said they could not find skilled workers to come and work for them. That continues, and so we need to continue the program. Housing is a huge issue. Bringing up the issue of housing at the Diamond Run Mall or other places is something that we, yes, we are working on, whether it's at the Diamond Run Mall or someplace else. There is a committee that's working on how to generate more housing as quickly as possible. It's, as you would expect, difficult because of the cost of construction, so we need to rethink how we're doing what we're doing, and we're doing that. Whether or not we reach the Rutland City Mayor's thousand additional units in Rutland City five years from now, that's a stretch goal. But if we even got close to that, that would be wonderful. If we had 500, that would be great. We have a long ways to go. So there's a joint effort right now around housing, around bringing more people here to fill the high-paying jobs that we do have and the places that Olivia was talking about. Everything has to happen at once, including working on childcare.
Yeah. To piggyback off of that, it's also meeting people where they're at in a way that we have a lot of remote workers coming to the area, and the hub is a great place for them. Not everyone likes to work outside of their home or inside their home five days a week, so maybe it's just once a day. You get out and you go into a place where you can co-work with others and have more human interaction than just those at home, and meet other people that has opened up doors for other opportunities. And it's growing too.
Olivia has significant experience now with targeting specific communities around the United States that we're finding success with, so she could list out different cities around the United States where we know people are coming from. And they continue to be people who are trying to escape hot air and fires, so it's out west, down south. And what we're calling political refugees, people that don't feel safe where they are living. And they're looking at Vermont, New Hampshire, Maine, and different New England states as safe places to be. You know, we worry about public safety here, but public safety in other places is incredibly different than what we have here. We have amazing law enforcement here. The work that they do, when they get up every morning and go and do what they do, it's pretty amazing. We're very lucky.
Questions? Yeah.
Do you have a way of measuring cause and effect for this program? These statistics versus what might be happening otherwise, just as sort of background noise from private employers that are recruiting and things like that?
So how do we determine if we didn't do this, would it just be happening anyway?
Right.
Potentially. But what we know through this program, and Olivia can describe in further detail, is that we know these folks came through this program, and there are others that are coming here that haven't come through the program. They don't need our permission to move here, and there are more than this, moving obviously to the community.
These are all people that came their first sort of introduction to the Rutland Region is through this program, not because the hospital was recruiting them and they said, oh, let me go check out this program and meet with the concierge or something like that?
It's a little combo. So we have some people who find Rutland County through Real Rutland. We have some who get a job at the hospital, and then they say, we had one woman come in one day, she said, I just got a job at the hospital and I need friends' help. So we connected her with the concierge coordinator, she got to know her, connected her with a concierge volunteer, and then from there, it opened up doors, and she's still at the hospital. We also work on retention. So we've worked with, again, Rutland Regional, Casella, GE, who are some of our other big ones that we do this. Velco, Community Health, Green Mountain Power, they found that maybe the wife has a job with them, but the husband has a job somewhere else. He doesn't feel like he fits in. If he doesn't feel like he fits in, then the family's going to up and move, because why stay here if you don't feel welcome? So we help with that retention factor, make everyone in the community welcome, and hopefully keep them here.
Getting people together. And so we purposefully have events where we bring people together. We can't make people be friends, but if they don't come together, they never will be. And so it's amazing what some appetizers and a beer will do when people get together just to talk to each other and share their life stories.
Housing.
I'm sorry?
Housing. I know the mayor's got his goal, I think, if I'm remembering right, Burlington, also the mayor of Burlington also had a goal, and they fell a little short, but they were, you know, they put the goal out there. How do, how does the town get involved with offering assets and places that could be redeveloped for housing? Are you including us?
Well, Casella has bought up the College of St. Joe's.
That's in the city too.
So there is a housing, ad hoc housing committee?
Is that the city, yeah?
There's an ad hoc housing committee, and we could, we should reach out to and say, would you like to be part of that?
Yes.
It includes the Housing Trust, the Housing Authority, the Planning Commission, all the regional players are involved in that. We have a couple, we have a realtor, we have a banker, we have developers, so they can represent that community. But there's no reason why someone from here couldn't join that group. It's a wide-open group.
Yes, yes, please, so.
And then we also connect them with realtors, so when they are, if they're looking to buy a home, then the realtors help them get a feel for where they want to move to.
Okay. Neighbor Works too, they have the potential for rehabbing some buildings.
Yes.
And they're in that ad hoc group as well.
Okay, very good, all right.
Yeah, all the, all the players that you think should be there that are funded because they're nonprofits are in that.
We want to play too. Okay. How much are you asking for this year?
Same amount.
Okay, well, that was.
And maybe, could you just briefly describe Carly and what Carly does?
Yes, so Carly Haven is our concierge coordinator. She is the person that when you put in a request that says, I'm thinking about moving here, give me more information, please. She reaches out to them, and she either does a phone call, video chat, just emails, and gets to know the person. So she kind of interviews them without them realizing it, and she finds out that Lyle is in his 40s, he has a wife, two kids. She's a teacher, he works at the hospital, and they both love rock climbing. So she connects them with a concierge volunteer who also has a husband who works at the hospital. They love rock climbing, and they also have two small kids. And from there, it creates those relationships. Like I said, it opens more opportunities and makes them feel welcome before they even get here.
Good, good. I'm going to say that I was at Applebee's, this is something that happened about a year ago, maybe less. I was at Applebee's and overheard a conversation between a couple who were patrons and the waitress, they were passing through. They were here for whatever, and they wanted to know what they could do in the area, and the waitress had no information. So can we make sure that our area restaurants are armed with, hey, here are some great things going on? So that's my plug. Anyway, anything else from?
Presentation?
Okay.
Another thing in your packet, you'll see what we consider a bit of a customized document. We, there are times that developers or others will reach out to us and say, hey, we've got somebody on the hook here, a business that wants to come to the region, and they want some information about what's going on around here. And so to your point, Mary, we put this together for a business that is trying to attract a store to come here, and because they just wanted to know, what can you do for fun? And we attached to this a traffic study, we attached to this a study on lead around retail. So we knew how much was being spent in Glenn's Falls on clothing, and why couldn't that be spent here in the Rutland area? And so we have information that we can provide to businesses if they're trying to attract other businesses or if municipalities are trying to attract businesses to their region. So this is just an example of that, less the traffic study, which happened to be on Route 7 for this business, so. We'll ask Bill what we need to do, and I think we get on the ballot, is that what we do?
You shouldn't have to get a petition because you're in the same amount of money as you have asked in the past, within 10%. So you do need to send in your report for publication in our annual report. And then the ask, I don't know the deadline for the ask, but the sooner you get it in, the better, so Carrie can get it on the ballot. Starting a folder.
You're already getting one.
Good, okay. Thank you very much for coming in, and thanks for the candy.
No prob, that was the easy part. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, other public comments, questions from the floor, anyone who is not otherwise on the agenda? I'm looking up on the Zoom screen too. Okay, if not, we're going to hop right in. Jean-Paul Fignant, Town Health Officer, Public Safety Building Clerk of the Works, and Second Constable. Which hat tonight? Hi.
So first things first, the station, we're pouring concrete, started pouring the knee walls today. We're going to be getting a revised construction schedule that incorporates the delay that we encountered because of site materials, but we're still planning on having the steel arrive sometime in December, first or second week. And they plan on working right through the winter to get the steel up, get it enclosed, and get it outfitted.
Five o'clock, they were orange sweatshirts all over those forms, they were finishing up.
Yeah.
They worked right till dark tonight.
They've already got the pad for the water tank poured, and that's curing on the bottom of the tank for the 20,000 gallons, so, yeah.
Do they have to wait the three weeks, JP, for the concrete to cure before they can start construction?
They did, they wait, they had to wait on that pad, I know that. So it may very well be they have to wait for the regular concrete, I don't know. Yeah. But other than that, that's all.
The retaining wall, it looks like we may not need one.
Boy, it's looking awful good. They're, they're going to do some testing on that bank, see what kind of compaction might be necessary, but yeah, it looks like we're going to avoid the retaining wall, which would be huge.
Nothing in our site plan to take care of that area, you know, the little cove in the back where the last three trees are. You know what I mean? When you're coming up from Danny's, you look down the wall, and then in the back, there's a little cove back there, and there's three or four trees left.
Yeah.
Is there anything in the site plan that addresses that? Because I didn't remember, I didn't really look at the site plan.
I remember the site plan's just delineating what has been cut. I don't remember.
Okay, so we have no plan for that area right yet. That's that cavern, you know, where we thought they could have put the material they dug out, but they said they couldn't.
Oh yeah, no, no. And in the back of my mind, at least, that was a future clean fill project for the town.
Yeah, okay.
Because we can get some square footage out of that.
Well, that, that would, there was always a question of parking, and that would increase the parking. There's a big area back there that would really increase our, so it's just something to think about as we, I didn't know if any of that was included, you know, they did all the tree work on the western or the eastern side pretty much. I didn't know if anything was going to happen in that cove in the back.
But and also, I asked them today to take a look at, with the omission of the retention wall, we can get some more parking on that side too. It might only be two or three spaces, but it would still be valuable to work it out that way.
Because I don't think anything we ever talked about when they were doing this was that area that sets to the northeast of the building that needs filling in.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, that was public service building. Anything for Second Constable or Health Officer?
No, the speeds are crazy with the school being back in session. It just doesn't seem to be any much we can do about that except what we're doing.
Yeah. And buildings that are, I've noticed several around town now that have been, you know, abandoned, broken into, are we keeping an eye on those? Because I think people are going to be moving into them.
If they're brought to my attention, I do, but there's, and the breaking in is where I can come in as the health officer, because that would pose a threat. But until that happens, there's really, we don't really have, the health officer doesn't have any jurisdiction.
Okay, there's a couple along here that are looking, you know, open.
Okay.
Okay.
Were those the ones that went up for tax sale?
Yes.
They have a new owner?
Yes.
And that same owner has others that he doesn't take care of?
Over there.
Right.
Do you follow all that, JP?
I'm sorry, no.
These were sold to an individual by tax sale?
Yes.
And that individual, we've had dealings with in the past with dilapidated buildings, so we're in the same place here.
All right.
Have you got any complaints about the mobile home on Grove Street sitting in that little field?
You know, I did, and I don't have, because it doesn't represent a threat to the public.
Okay.
I don't have any jurisdiction as a health officer. I checked with the Department of Health on that. We have to be able to show some threat to the public.
Did anybody talk to you about doing something about the derelict buildings at Diamond Run? And if we have any, because this, that came in one of our discussions about whether or not our, that ordinance we passed about these attractive nuisances in buildings that do present a public safety, if, is that just something that's out of the scope of what we could actually start? Some kind of proceedings on them to do something with that building? Or is that pushing that?
You know, I don't know what kind of leverage we could generate with an enforcement action. By taking a ride around the property, I don't see any open doors or things that would, you know, pop right out.
Because they shut them up when they leave and open them up when they get back there, but anyway.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, because we had that discussion, and I don't know if it ever made it to your ears, about whether or not what we have on the books would pertain to that building and something that might prompt them to do something.
So we had pretty good success with the property up on Perkins Road, if you remember.
Yeah.
We did commence something. Kevin was always saying, go slow, go slow.
Right.
For a lot of reasons, but we were successful in getting that property cleaned up.
Is that finished now?
Yeah, I mean, it's to the point where it's no longer a concern to us.
Good. Well, we've got others that I think need some attention that way too.
If you just drop me an email if you're passing by a property at any given time, and I can follow up on that, and I'll let you know how I make out.
Yeah, well, that's the one that we talked about.
Yeah.
It's rather large. It's a complicated situation and it's, it's a, that's a, you know, because it's off the road, nobody really sees it, but that's like one of the worst blighted places we have.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Thank you JP. Uh, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission.
Good evening. Um, the, the Post Road Solar Project uh, that still hasn't, the, the full application still hasn't gone into the PUC for that. They got busy with another uh, project, another solar project. Um, but they're still expecting to put in a, a full application. Um, so, um, I've been, I set up a site visit and everyone's welcome to come next Thursday afternoon, November 16th um, at three. We're gonna carpool to the site, uh, and meet at Sewards. Uh, there is a, a, a curb cut from Route 7, but there isn't much room um, to park even when you get in that, on that farm road. But, um, I say all this, the corn is still standing in that field. They, they expected it to, uh, to be harvested this week or next week. So, um, we're hoping that will happen, but I will let people know if, if we need to delay this. Um, the, the planning commission has had some concerns about, um, the setback not being, um, far enough. Um, the screening, the site plan didn't have, um, didn't really look like it had enough screening. Um, and, um, since we last talked about this with the developer, they've done a hi- a historical review and they know of the area in the southwest corner of the parcel that needs to be avoided. So I'm not sure what, you know, how that's going to affect their plan um, for the site. So those are some of the questions we have. Again, it's, uh, next.
So three o'clock Thursday, the 16th at Sewards Parking Lot and then we'll, we'll carpool over?
Yeah, we'll carpool. We'll probably meet there, um, anywhere between 2:45 and 3:00.
Okay.
Head over.
For anyone who would like to go. You'll recall that the planning commission was trying to set this up and they invited us to join. We had some questions when we first saw the designs initially. So that's why. Okay.
So everything's getting stretched out a little bit, you know, they're, you know, them applying um, and us being able to get access because of that corn. Uh, but hopefully we'll work around that. And, um, I think the only other thing to bring up is that the, the planning commission has, has started work on um, identifying the properties that would be affected um, if a river corridor, corridor ordinance um, wasn't acted. Um, there are, there's quite a few government properties, but there's also quite a few commercial properties. So we're, we're looking at the maps and, and making sure we get the addresses right. So that when we do get ready to, um, reach out to these people, we've got the, the right folks. And again, you know, the river corridor is, you know, it's a little bit different than the special flood hazard area. It's, it's room for, for rivers and streams to move. And, um, there would be some restrictions on what people can do within that, that river corridor. Um, but it also gives the town um, a bigger share of money when there are, um, disasters, any kind of disaster declared um, in the county. So that's, that's the carrot of all this.
Um, I do wanna mention, um, mention to all of the department has, well, two things. One, it's budget time. So start thinking about what um, planning commission needs for a budget. So take a look at the lines you have in the general budget. Um, and the next thing, because we met with finance committee, met with our auditor, we are going to have to track very carefully every grant that we have received. Um, and look at it and know if there is a federal component in it and how much the federal component is because we're probably going to trip a, if not a single audit, um, requirement, we're going to have to do a, um, stepped up audit because if we have $750,000 of federal funds, even excluding ARPA funds. Um, and I think with some of the projects that we have, we may be approaching that. So every department, if you're receiving, even if it looks like a state fund that you're getting money from, if there is a federal component to it, all of the information now about grants received or applied for goes to Bill and he's gonna do a spreadsheet. So we have a handle on if and when we trip that, um, audit, the additional audit requirement. So. I got to pick on you first, Barbara.
Okay.
I'm thinking of the energy, the, the MERP stuff. I don't know whether any of that is federally funded.
Hmm, I don't think so. I think that was all, um, oh, you know, it came from the legislature, but that's a good question. Maybe some of it was, was ARPA.
Okay. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. All of us will to make sure we know. All right. Questions for our Town Planning Commission Chair? No. Thank you very much, Barbara. And thank the planning commission for us. Okay. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Um, a couple of things. Basketball's moving along. It'll start, uh, after Thanksgiving for our rec programs. I want a big shout out to the Fire Department, Police Department and our seventh graders for our trick or treat on the trail. I would bring you candy, but we have none left. We got tapped out. We had and Bill was there. Um, and so was Angie was there and Chief was there and Dell was there. And, um, Bill can attest, uh, ballpark, we had over 400 people go through it.
Nice.
Um, which is pretty awesome.
My grand, my great grandkids really enjoyed it.
And the kids really do a nice job. We give them a lot of credit. They come up with the games and then they run the activities as the kids go through and it's just been a huge success. So we'll look to make it bigger and better. And I'll buy more candy. I thought I bought enough, but I literally was down to the last nugget. Um, and I'm good. I'm good. I really don't need any. Uh, let's see. The rink, um, will be put in probably this week or next week. So hopefully we'll, Mother Nature will cooperate. So we'll be able to do some ice skating up at school. Um, so that's something to look forward to. Obviously, once the weather kind of does its thing, being cold and we don't have like the hot cold like we did last winter, hopefully we'll, we get enough for that. Other than that, everything's kind of buttoned up and shut up at the parks for the winter. Hopefully people will be respectful and continue what they've been doing with their dogs over the winter months and that is keeping them on a leash and disposing of their waste in the proper containers. Other than that, I don't have much. We did have a committee meeting of if.
Yeah. I, I wanted Mike to call in a new committee meeting because.
We have a couple of things to add.
Um, because of an unhappy member of the community and her son. Um, so what I'd like to do is have a committee meeting and explain to that person what we explained in our committee meeting so that we warn it so that she and her son can come. So if you can do that within the next two weeks. Cause after that, I'm a little bit tied up.
Yes, we know you're. So we will try to make that work. We can talk later about it.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I don't know about you wanna, the other stuff that we talked at committee, if you wanna go through. While we, so we, you do have minutes in your packet. Um, so as you can see, we talked about the dog park thing, which is really on hold until we analyze the, um, historical information on the property ownership, Derek Northwood. Um, we talked about, started talking about the pool, which is, you know, an issue for a future discussion. Um, we went through our budget. We got that mostly nailed down, subject, of course, to the board's decisions about any pay increases. Um, and then there is note on here about the discussion we had that we will be readdressing regarding the, um, policy for, um, rec participation um, for sports teams. And I do think there needs to be a little bit of an edit on here. We haven't met to review these minutes, but um, you can see under paragraph 4A, at the end of that sentence, after the comma, it says, and they could seek permission from another school. And I think that should read their town. So our understanding of the policy that area rec directors um, have been following is that if a school is fielding a team, then students start to play for the school team. If the school does not have a team, then, uh, students can look to their town rec team. If there are neither, then I guess there's another option after that. But so, so that should be amended to read uh, permission from their town to participate in their program. So that's current policy and we'll be discussing that further in another meeting.
Um, the same thing about grants that you may have received? Yeah.
I don't think, I, I think I'm lucky in that. I don't know if I received any grants.
Okay. The, the bicycle, was it mountain bike trail? Was that not, no, that was us. That was us. Um.
Like, do I have to, the, like the sunscreen grant thing I got like that in the waterfall? I mean, do I have to go that?
No, if it, if it was, I mean, that was, was that a state program?
Yeah, just something I applied for. There wasn't money. It was like you applied and they gave you a sunscreen dispenser in or a waterfall.
What we're looking for are things that have federal components that will.
I know. I will look, but I don't think I fall in that category.
Okay.
But I will definitely check in with Bill to look at some past things to make sure.
Good.
So I don't, I'm not the one that tips this over.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. That would be bad.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Nothing else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Hello, how's everybody tonight?
Good.
Uh, sorry I can't be there. Um, I caught something late last week and I feel like crap. So, um, I, I didn't, I don't mind sharing with people, but this is the one time I just don't want to. Sorry.
Um, appreciate it.
Uh, not really a lot on the, uh, schedule here. We, uh, worked on the multi-use path, uh, a few days last week. Uh, we went down and widened that, the top, the upper section. So it's actually eight feet wide now. Uh, going down to anywhere it splits and goes down over the hill. Uh, where it had been going and we've got that leg that cuts off through the woods. Uh, we had to do a, a fill there. So we're down to that point and it's eight feet wide and it's really nice now, actually. Um, uh, Brookfield Services came to light up the generator and when they did, they got there and the battery was dead. So uh, the control board at some point did itself in, I guess. So we're waiting for a control board for that and while that generator up and running. Uh, we spent some time, uh, after the last select board meeting, uh, gearing the trucks up for some snow that they were predicting, which we got a little bit of, but um, in the process of that, I found kind of buried in the cold storage building two, uh, 100 gallon liquid tanks. So we're actually right now working on, uh, modifying the tanks and the trucks, the, the two newer trucks that we've got. And, uh, we're gonna try to do like a hot salt kind of thing. We're gonna pre-treat the, the salt at the spinner. The Western Star truck already had a tank in it and most of the plumbing there, we had to modify the plumbing a little bit to make it work, but um, that truck is actually ready to roll right now. Uh, the other two trucks, we've got probably another day or so in them. And those will be ready to go. Um, in that light, we got our salt price the other day. I actually had to call them because, you know, you'd think that they would just let us know, but they didn't. Uh, so the price this year is a dollar higher than it was last year. It was $97 a ton for the treated salt. Last year it's uh, $98 a ton this year. Um, so I signed the agreement and I ordered 500 tons to get us kind of rolling. We got, uh, probably between 125 and 175 tons in the building right now. So if we get something between now and when we get delivery, we can handle something minor. And we're getting ready for the big W season. Um, and that's kind of it. The only other thing that I really have and it's in your packet is, um, the signature page for the Post Road Sidewalk Grant. And as far as the grant stuff, most of my stuff is, uh, state. The only thing I don't know about is, um, JP Sidewalk. I'm not sure if there's any Fed money in that.
Yeah, it's, it, we think it's all Fed money.
Okay.
But, but we get to spend it over what, six years? So we should be able to piece it okay. All right. So I am looking for, what am I looking for? Grant agreement number three. Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
So that is Post Road Sidewalk. That's them giving us permission to push it out a year.
Right.
Okay. So it looks like, I don't know. Yeah. Okay. So. And I think it's one of those where.
Moved to authorize Mary to sign that amended grant agreement.
Okay. It's AOT. The word and date is 12/31/24.
Yep.
Right. Any discussion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion's made and seconded. Uh, this is a grant for what, 48,000? 250. And this is for, sorry.
Post Road.
Post Road Sidewalk.
Yep.
That's why roadside, right? Because we couldn't get folks to bid on the payday part. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any other questions for Dave?
Dave, are you coming in for the meeting tomorrow?
Oh, I wouldn't miss it for the world.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if you felt.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be there. Yeah, no, I'm, 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 I'm over the hump. It's just I'm not sure if I'm contagious and I don't wanna spread it around, but um, I'm, I'm pretty much over the hump. The Saturday and Sunday were awful. Oh my. But.
All right. Um, you're also visiting a resident tomorrow about water in the basement?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Cause I gotta phone call.
I'm sure you did. And, and, and half of everybody else in Rutland Town.
I, I bet. Um, so just, I, I think there's a causation question. Let me put it that way. So, um, do your due diligence and, um, let us know what you find and if we need to do anything.
Okay, will do.
Okay. If there's nothing else, thanks very much, Dave.
All right. Thank you guys.
Thanks.
All right. Next, Marcia Choffee. And we do have something for Marcia.
Hi, I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Marcia.
Hi, Sharon, Matt, Marie. Everyone.
In your packet, you do have, yeah, errors and omissions, uh, certificate.
Correct.
Yeah. Can you explain this?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, please.
Yep. Kristy Wright, who is our, um, district advisor to PVNR, Property Evaluation and Review. Um, does a review of, um, not only the utilities, but also all of the sale studies. And she came across a, um, oh, I, I don't know whether it's called a. oh, I, I don't know whether it's called a mistake or what, but she found out that, um, there was an error. And thank goodness, it was in our favor where we gained another 891,555 dollars from Green Mountain Power. And that is after we had to use the, uh, CLA of 84.4%. But still, it was to our advantage. So I had to, uh, it wasn't really a Lister error. It was just more of an oversight when the declarations were presented to the Board of Listers, but, uh, I felt that, um, it would, you know, it would behoove us to, um, do an error and omission, omission statement. So. Anyway.
Okay, thank you. Good catch. So this is C in your packet. Is there, and it looks like all of us get to sign if we approve it. So is there a motion? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the, um, errors and omissions certificate concerning Green Mountain Power. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And I'm going to start signing and pass it around.
Thank you.
Any questions of our? And we, there was a brief conversation about putting together a contract proposal for a reappraisal that won't kick in until what? Three to six years hence, because we can't get reappraisal for?
Right. We, we're going to be working between Marie, Jack and myself. We're going to be working on presenting a, um, you know, a proposal for bids to go out to, um, you know, for, for reappraisals. We did not get a letter, uh, to reappraise this year, but because we have not reappraised since 2009, uh, it's been, you know, quite a while. And we have been very, very fortunate up until COVID hit, that we were always at either 100%. I think the lowest we ever went to before COVID was at 98%. So I think that we've done a really good job keeping the, uh, appraisal in Rutland Town at, uh, at face value. But, uh, it's time and, uh, uh, we don't know what the state is going to do. That's still up in the air. Uh, it's still being discussed. We don't know when and if they're going to take over, uh, doing reappraisals. But, um, we'd like to get at least our foot in the door so that we can, uh, get our bids out there.
Okay, good. And as I recall, we set money aside every year. So we've got money to do a townwide reappraisal if we need to.
Yeah, it's the per parcel, uh, payment that we get and that'll be coming in November. And I think the last time I checked with, uh, Carrie, I think we had, oh, I think we had upwards of, uh, 205 or 210,000 dollars in the money market account, which I mean, we haven't touched that since, you know, 2009, when the full reappraisal was done with the statistical reappraisals done in 2013.
Good. Well, thank you very much for staying on top of the stuff and for finding us some extra value too.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, this was the only account that we had to apply the CLA to. So we kind of lost out a little bit on the, uh, 100% CLA, but, uh, still 191,000 is nothing to, uh, you know, scare away.
Yeah, good. Okay, if nothing else, thank you, Marsha. Have a good evening. All right, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chris.
Uh, let's see here. Last two weeks, we've had eight fire calls, which brings us to 14 for the month of October. Which brings us to 162 total for the year. Uh, so we're almost up to where we were last year. I'm sure we will by the end of the year. I had a very busy month with Halloween stuff. We went to Wonderfeet down in the city for, uh, truck or treat. We went up to the town school, as Mike said, for, uh, the kids doing their thing in the trail. We went to the Meadows the other day to, they had some big party, you know, everybody was invited. So there's a ton of kids up there. So a lot of community services past month. That's about all I got. We did have a fire committee meeting tonight. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all or not, but that's all I have.
Okay. Um, do you want to touch on what we did at FIRE? You want me to do a quick run through?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, we did meet primarily to work on the budget for next year, of course, waiting and till we come up with our compensation rate increase tonight. Um, but we will see a proposal in to increase the hourly rate being paid to the fire chiefs to make them more commensurate with where the police chiefs are. And Chris, now remembering that it's a per hour rate, firefighters are, and the, the chiefs are part-time, police chief is full-time. So, um, Chris feels that within the budget that he already has this year, he can accommodate a bump up in the pay rate for the chiefs. He's, he worked up some nice numbers, but because we wanted you all to, to see them and go over them, um, it's going to be in our packet. He's going to put, put them together and put them in our packet for next week. And the request will be to approve beginning January 1st, 2024, um, the bump up in pay. So you'll get to see that next time. We can talk about it then. Um, we briefly discussed and we, um, the fire folks are going to work on the ordinance for private fire hydrants. We just had a brief discussion and it looks like it hasn't been looked at for a while. We do have some questions. There are fire hydrants, private fire hydrants that we are not aware of. And there's a question about transfer of the fire district fire hydrants to the town of West Rutland as part of the um, upcoming, you know, takeover by West Rutland or the fire system in this side of town. So, um, stuff, good, good working session, good numbers, and you'll hear more about that um, next meeting and as we get into the budgeting process. So fair summary? Okay. All right. So any questions for our police, our fire chief? Nope. That's it. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Hey, Carrie.
Well, um, I heard that some people went to the school today for the election. But there isn't one.
You had six people show up for elections. Okay.
They say who they wanted to vote for.
Isn't it voting today? March and next November.
Yep, you're early.
I know. It's wonderful. I mean,
troopers. I just happened to be at the door, by the door. And I'm like, oh, and I'm like, oh, voting.
Well, thank you to those folks for showing up.
It could have gone down to jazz band rehearsal program.
So I kind of it, uh, it, it didn't surprise me. I, I had a few phone calls as well. Over the last couple of weeks and they were adamant that their, today was election day, although I told them it wasn't. But they really thought it was.
It is in some states, so.
Yes, correct. Um, all right. So that, there was no election just to make it.
Well, even on Facebook, people were putting, don't forget to vote tomorrow.
That's how this stuff starts. Somebody thinks it's a joke.
Right.
And then it gets serious.
Bunch of quick little things. Um, COTS is getting closer and closer to going live. Uh, again, that's our digital record, um, vendor that we went with. Uh, they came and scanned the books and they took my files last week of the land records. So when they compile everything, then that's when we'll see some real progress. Um, so that's one quick update. Um, other two quick updates, um, as I've been talking about, the underwriting process isn't in effect right now. Um, so, uh, that'll be for the ACH tax payments that will be available in January. I can see a few people jumping board with, um, coming aboard, uh, for those payments in January, but mostly, um, I'm thinking May will get the most. Um, people, because they'll have heard about it by then. Uh, I tend to, to, um, the plan is to test that before that actually becomes live as well. Um, we've had success with the rec payments, um, through online. I just wanted to give a little reminder, since this is new for everyone, um, it's you really probably shouldn't just go on there to pay for your child. You are going to want to sign them up too. Um, so there is something that does say online, um, comes right up in yellow. Um, if your child, if you're paying, um, but you didn't do the form, filling out the form, it's not valid. Your child isn't quite valid yet. Um, but somehow they're getting past that. So just a little reminder that that's an important piece of it. On the flip side, um, if you're signing your child up with the form, we also require payment of some sort. So try to do both. Yeah, okay. But it's new. You know what? Just a reminder. So, uh, let's see, uh, just another quick reminder. Friday, the town hall is closed for Veterans Day, which includes my office. So here till Thursday. We'll be back on Monday. Uh, let's see, um, we did have a finance committee, um, some of the things that we touched upon. Uh, in addition to the grants that Mary has, have already discussed, we discussed, um, the single audit for ARPO, which goes into the grants. We discussed the Cortina money for the police department. Um, and also, um, we talked about the, our normal audit. Our audit is almost finished. He hopes to have the report after Thanksgiving, perhaps usually, uh, Andrew sits down with me before Christmas and has that all complete. Um, I'm anticipating that that'll be just fine. Um, and, uh, this goes along with kind of the finance committee that we can get into a little bit more if you want, but, um, I did put out the request to the banks for, um, the extra money for our public safety building. Uh, there were four banks that I reached out to uh, with a formal request of 2.5 million as our extra money that we need. Um, I had, and with a due date of November 13th, uh, which is next week. As of today, I haven't heard anything other than one of the three banks is not able to do that. Um, so I haven't heard anything yet. I'll keep you updated on, on those requests. I did get a phone call from one of the banks and they wanted to know a little bit more information. So I gave them more information. Um, they did say that this may not be possible. So just to put it out there. And let's see.
So I guess we're trying. But if the banks won't lend to municipalities, and we've done our due diligence anyway.
But we have a few more days. Maybe they're just kind of going to come in the mail over the weekend and you never know. Um, and real quickly, if you're listening, and I know you're part of the BCA, but the, um, I had scheduled a, um, meeting of the Board of Abatement for November 14th for a property owner in town who had requested that. Um, and I will put this out there tomorrow, but that property owner said she doesn't plan on attending. So I told her that is going to cancel the meeting. So I'm just going to put it out there.
The statute, because I'm not sure she has to attend.
I can check the statute based on what she kind of told me and stuff. She had pictures.
Yeah, I mean, she can send in her stuff and it's at her risk if she doesn't show up. But there's something in the back of my brain that says, I think we still, as, as long as she doesn't withdraw her request, I think we still have to deal with it as best we can with the information that we have.
Okay. I'll check it and let you know tomorrow.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, so it's up to you if you wanted to go, um, further into the finance committee and what we talked about.
Nat, Finance Committee.
Well, we've talked about most of the stuff. We had the discussion of the grant funds and the single audit. Was actually the main purpose of that meeting. And we talked about, um, accounting for the Cortina and funds and, um, allocating to the police budget. That's, that's essentially it.
Yeah. So, um, to go along with that, and I know you've already asked everyone, but all department heads, we need all of the paperwork to bill, no matter what department you are, if you have, um, grants that you had in the fiscal year of, uh, 22, 23.
The one that closed.
The one that closed. If we're still receiving, uh, money from that grant, we still need the paperwork. Um, and then obviously this current fiscal year, we need the paperwork. Um, I would like to make it a practice, even going forward, when this project is all over. No matter what, um, to get that paperwork, doesn't have to be original, just copy it, give it to Bill. Um, between he and I, we're keeping a spreadsheet of status and breakdown of, of the finances in each of those. In particular, this year for the fact of, um, the single audit, but I'd like to do it forward. So we have one place where they are all kept.
I think that's best practice going forward. So the treasurer and the, the town administrative assistant knows where all of the grants are, what the requirements are and so on. So yes, please.
Just makes sense. I mean, I, I receive, uh, them state money through a portal and oftentimes it doesn't give you enough information as a treasurer, what it is and what it's for, if I didn't attend a meeting or something like that. So just makes sense. Um, and as far as the Cortina money, um, Andrew is in the process of getting balances and working the accounting out for uh, what last year's closed year will look like so that we can move forward for this year in what the Cortina funds, um, the balance will be as we keep moving forward in this year.
So we realized we didn't have a, a balance on that. And there were expenses that we wanted to be able to capture and put toward it. Now, we know the overtime for the officers who are doing the patrols at the south end of town, that's obviously covered. But we also talked about capturing a police of the, a, a piece of the cruiser expense and a piece of the admin expense and all of those things that all relate to the south end of town extra policing. So that's what the Cortina funds are for, and it shouldn't be straining the usual police budget. It should come out of that because that's where it's directed. That was, that was kind of the gist of what we were looking at. Yeah.
And so, um, the single audit for, um, the public safety building expenses most likely will be a level of a single audit. It may be full-blown or it may be a step down.
Right.
Um, and then going into budget season, it was good to hear from Andrew knowing that this will happen. Um, and then going into budget season, it was good to hear from Andrew knowing that this will happen at some sort of level and that he has discussed with me a number that we should probably put in as an estimate on top of the other audit money that we would need for the year anyway. So that audit will happen at the end of the fiscal year twenty-four, going into the next fiscal year. Just to let the public know.
We we likely will have to do an additional audit in addition to our usual one. But it could be if we do it right and we manage the money right, it could be a s- uh what's called a step down audit, which is a little cheaper and that's what we're aiming for, so. Okay, any questions for our town clerk? Did you wanna take up the liquor license?
Remind me, I had to um request for liquor licenses. Um, one is a they do a half year, which is the East Restaurant.
Yes.
We usually do that twice a year because they do have. And the top two are these people over here next to us at one fifty-one, I think it is, because they took over and I think they're reapplying under their name.
Okay, so this is Suliman Enterprises Inc. It's for second class liquor license and tobacco license sales. And of course, Carrie's mentioned the third class liquor license for East Restaurant. And looking at the chief and no problems with any of them, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded to approve these three licenses. Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Everybody's in favor and we all get to sign.
How's your employee search going?
I have a good amount of um applications I gotta move forward with.
Okay, any other questions for Carrie? If not, thank you very much. All right, Mike Delahanty, Town First Constable. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. All right, um, uh, Halloween night, I participated with uh with the fire department and making my rounds through the town. Um, I think it was probably the good weather, but I don't think I've seen so many kids trick or treaters out. And it was a really nice sight to see, so that was real nice and we had no issues that night or none of that were reported, so that was a plus. Um, past couple of weeks, we've had a ton of animal complaints, um, large number of them were down at the Cortina. Um, I know, shocker, right? Uh, but actually the best one uh was just the other night. Uh, I don't know if everybody saw the moose, that was uh moose that was loose um up in the uh Karen Drive, Gleason Road, Town Line Road area, a young bull. Um, there were some rumors out there that it had been injured, but no, that's not true at all. Uh, but between myself and Officer Plakis and the game wardens, uh, we couldn't push it uh across Town Line Road East, but it obviously made its way because um after a lot of circling the block, it didn't make it.
I think he made it to the firm yesterday.
No, there you go.
He was behind my trailer.
Okay, all right.
I'm assuming it it was a long gangly leg, small, nice little set of horns.
Yes.
So he did not go where you wanted him to go.
No, no, he didn't that night either, so.
Yeah, we had to keep him separated from the horses.
Yeah, okay. Well, the game warrants advised that um they weren't overly concerned. They if it was mom and a and a calf, they would have more concern about trying to make sure to push it as far as they could, but.
He appeared to be quite healthy and. Through the fence like they usually do.
Yep.
He was walking the fence, um, and then I had chased him down into the lower field, hoping he would go into the swamp and maybe cross Route seven and disappear. And about ten minutes later, he was up to Gallo Poles checking out their gardens. And so he was there for about four or five hours and then he disappeared.
Yeah, he got trapped in a backyard on Karen Drive and the game warrants were coming from the west. And by the time they got off the like West Charlotte exit, he had hopped the fence.
Yep.
Just didn't wanna stick around, so but it all ended well, so that was that was good. Um, crazy to think, but the holidays are here, like Black Friday is seventeen days away. So I'm gonna coordinate with the chief, um, we'll put some efforts out that especially that morning, uh, but especially that weekend and moving forward. Uh, have some presence at uh the Plaza, of course, and Tractor Supply, Home Depot and everywhere else that we can hopefully coordinate some efforts to have a presence to slow that down as much as we can, so uh that's that. Um, beyond that, I've got nothing.
Well, that's quite a bit. Any questions for our first constable? No?
Okay.
All right, good to see you guys as always.
Take care. Oh, you need to also get your numbers in for your budget.
Uh, I talked to Carrie Buddy yesterday.
Okay, and you don't get any grant money, right?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet.
No. All right, Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Ed, before you go too far, I'm delivering a message from an old school teacher you had, who's one of my dear friends. And she's asked me if you were still the chief of police and I said yes. And she said, undoubtedly, he was the best student I ever had. He was the cutest little boy and he was very shy. And I think she taught you in second grade. So she asked me if I would tell you that, so I thought I would announce it. Oh, she said he was the cutest little boy she ever saw. And very polite.
Bless you. So uh, I got two things for you this time. I'll lend you the stats for you uh for the month. We had uh total cases, uh, one ninety-two with a hundred and forty-five in the south end of town. For October was a seventy-six percent of every time we spent in uh south end of town. The second page just tells you all the different places where we got complaints. A lot of visits going place.
So which what's the situation since it's come up with the Diamond Run Mall? Do you get called up there very much?
Uh, once in a while, but my uh take on at this point in time is uh, we've made it pretty clear what we want from the security company and the people that came and spoke to us. I'm not gonna waste our officer's time trying to uh, you know, police their building that they don't, obviously don't care about at this point in time. The only reason they do anything, I think, is because the we have made a point to tell them to lock their stuff up and before somebody gets hurt there. That was their biggest concern. And they have sensor security who some sometimes calls us, we're down there and do something, but not very often.
Okay.
We had uh, any questions on on these things right here? I think we had we had sixty-eight calls to service, twenty-five of those uh plus twenty-five power stops. Uh, I did find something out uh new, uh, I discussed with Bill, we checked out the nine-one-one map and that apparently technology is much better nowadays than when I first started as an officer. Because when I worked for the city, everything that happened on Lincoln Avenue was the city's problem, right up until Route seven. Now we have those fancy equipment, uh, as a section of uh. First hundred and twenty-five yards. Yeah, it belongs to the town of Rollin and uh, yeah, I had to investigate the access. That's why we own a little corner of Comcast Building. Yes, yes, yeah. I know about actually half, about half at a diagonal. And they pay taxes, so we uh had a rather DUI accident down there, took care of that. I was thinking, I wish I'd known this years ago.
Yeah.
I think the city plows it. Yes, it do.
We always plowed it to uh turn around uh back of Prado's. You always buy, I don't know if Dave, I don't know if Dave plows it now, but we always plowed it. Maybe nobody is.
We'll get a call.
No, the the city plowed that all the way out. Cause they they make their they make their loop background, they make their loop background to Field Avenue. Yeah, we we always used to plow it to the use, turn around there, Prado's back entrance.
Okay.
Maybe we'll stay quiet, but.
Good idea.
So la- not last, it was a Thursday before we went to uh Massachusetts Deputy Chief Wasserman. We picked up the cruiser, so Chevy uh Tahoe. So we have that in there. We at this point in time, we've had some repairs on the other cruisers, nothing that or shattering. But waiting to get, we have to get a uh computer docking station and put the radios in the new cruiser, so.
Matt.
Yes, Matt. Um, how do we distinguish the total case number on here, one hundred ninety-two versus the sixty-eight calls that are on here?
This is from, if you go on the second page, that is the number of calls, that's where the all the businesses. And this is, I believe this includes all calls, even state police calls on this section here.
These are just direct to the town.
As of what's that?
These calls are just direct to the town.
Yeah, these right here are directly to the town. I can confirm that to be sure, I'm quite sure we're taking all complaints that we get in the town area. And we add them onto that little stats there.
So the sixty-eight are part of the one ninety-two then presumably?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Have a, but I don't remember. Well, um, so this cruiser that we bought, that's the one we're paying for that from that addition, that first sum of money we got from the Cortina.
Correct.
And all the outfitting and everything comes from that.
Correct.
Correct, so that doesn't affect your budget.
Correct.
That was a point.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was, I think, how I made the motion almost a year ago. It's taken a while to get that car, but you got it.
Yes, we did finally get it.
Yeah.
Great, nice car.
Good, okay. If nothing else, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
We're gonna have a meeting at some point.
We need to have a meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so police committee needs to meet and go over the budget.
Okay, if you wanna, I'll throw some dates at you.
Yes, please. That'd be good.
Okay.
Me and Matt, because we just enjoy meetings. Okay, uh, Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, uh, the only thing left in your packets is for um the letter D on uh to-do list. It's the Regional Rutland Regional Emergency Management Committee has two members from the town, which in the past was Marty Wasserman and myself. Uh, and we agree to be reappointed if you so choose, but this.
So move.
Yeah.
Check it.
I have to offer as the chair to sign.
Before he says anything after that, but.
Made and seconded um to approve Marty Wasserman and Bill Sweet as our emergency management uh Regional Planning Commission delegates. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, Bill.
Absolutely. Uh, okay, on your desk, there's a few things left. Uh, there are uh the, there's, do you have two sets of finance committee minutes? Cause there were two meetings between now and then, so you have both of those.
Just now, you mean.
Personnel.
That, that was her name, yes. Yeah, same, same, same people, different name. Uh, and as a result of that, you have a proposal from HR acquired uh that we just got, so that's on your desk also.
Okay.
We need to take action on that?
Yeah, here, well, let me just do a quick and dirty. You'll recall, we hired Teresa Mealy, which is HR acquired, to guide us through the process of updating and just fixing our personnel manual. Um, she's had meetings with department heads and with Matt and I and with Bill and Carrie. And she's uh with the original contract was uh for twenty-five hundred dollars. And I think that covered what twenty, twenty-five hours. Um, we did check in with her because we had another meeting with her um last week or was it earlier this week? I don't know, it's all a blur. And she said, yeah, she's getting to the end of what she's doing or what the money is. There's still quite a bit more to do. She's, um, for example, we do need to uh coordinate the time sheets. Um, we do need to answer a list of questions with the assistance of our town attorney on how we have handled things and whether it complies with state and federal employment law. And um, a whole bunch of things like that. And she's really, she dove into all of this and is giving us very, very good guidance. So we asked her for a proposal to keep going basically, cause we know she's not going to be able to do what's needed with the little bit of her contract. So she's proposing an additional fifteen hundred dollars for twenty additional hours of customer support to continue working on the personnel manual. I, she's made excellent progress. And I think the 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 light is beginning to glimmer at the end of the tunnel, so I would recommend it.
So.
No, she's been made and seconded to uh fund an additional fifteen hundred dollars for HR acquired. Any discussion?
What line did we pull up from last time?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
I believe it was professional services.
Okay.
Sounds all right.
Yeah, I think so.
Sounds fitting.
Mary?
Yes.
Yeah, may I interject here? Um, Teresa has not met with the Listers.
Yes, and and I did mention that to her when we met the other day. And I understand she did put a call into you so that she can set up some with you. Okay.
I wanna make sure that we're not left out of the process.
No, and there's, and so what she's focusing on are the hired folks right now. She started with like the highway committee and the the um fire chief and the um police. But I said, you know, we've got those other folks who also, especially like the Lister's office because you know, there's a lot going on, but they happen to be elected. So for the purposes of conforming part of what she's doing, she will be in touch with you about that.
Yeah, and I did speak to her last week, so she did uh leave me a message indicating that she would be in touch with us in the next few weeks, so yeah, just wanted to make sure we weren't left out.
No, no, don't want you left out.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Okay, you're welcome. So the pending motion is fifteen hundred dollars additional to HR required. There's no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I don't think there's anything to sign if you could just let her know.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh, North Star Fireworks sent us information on scheduling a display for next year.
Okay, you'll recall that we had, we we actually were late contracting with them because we thought we had another vendor and that didn't work out. So when we actually ended up contracting with them, it wasn't on the fourth. And then maybe a bad call on my part. It looked rainy enough that the day we did have it scheduled for, I said, no. So you can blame it on me. We didn't have fireworks, but we held it instead, the firework display on townwide celebration, which apparently was some amount of success. What's your pleasure?
Discuss this, I wish you.
So we had a lot of, there was, we got a lot of feedback mainly online. People were disappointed it wasn't on the Fourth of July.
Okay.
How many, I don't, I don't know if there are time residents, I don't know, it was, it was just what it was, but.
My thought is, everybody wants to do fireworks on the Fourth of July and you could go to numerous places. But at the end of August or first part of August, you can't go anywhere other than Rutland Town to see them.
I think you're right, Joe.
Think the attendance was less than it normally is when you say, when we do it on the fourth.
We don't usually.
It was pretty well attended after the townwide celebration. I mean, there was still, there's still a fair amount of people there.
There were.
I just, I thought it was less than.
I think, I think the scheduling and the, cause that was the, we had a scheduled date, which we had to, we had to postpone. We had a rescheduled date, which we had to postpone, which, so that was a third date down the line. So I think when we put it out there early, that this is the day, that kind of levels it out.
We're gonna have our townwide celebration next year.
Yeah, we've already, we've already, we've already set the day. Yeah, it's uh.
It revolves around somebody that.
It's August, it's August seventeenth, yeah.
I think that we should try it again. We shouldn't decide just on one, one event. And I, and I take this from experience.
I think that we should try it again, we shouldn't decide just on one, one event, and I, and I take this from experience.
Try which, try the fourth or try the?
No, do it, we've done it on the fourth forever, we gotta do something different.
Okay.
Um.
I think they can go other places on the fourth, they can go no other place.
Right.
On the seventeen.
So that's my.
Do you think that would be cheaper?
Rain out with it.
Uh, we are get, we are all but guaranteed the day, doesn't, it doesn't, the, the, there's no discount for not taking it on the Fourth of July. When we pay upfront, we get more of a display.
So Kurt has a point.
Yeah, when, what do we do if rains out?
That was, that, that's the risk, so that was the risk with having the townwide celebration on the, on the, we, we, and we scheduled it for right before the pool closed, but having it on. The last day of the pool, like everything hinges on good weather, cause if there's bad weather, it's all, it's all off, there's no, there is no rescheduling it, so that's a, it's a. It's an up or down date, that's it, so um with the townwide celebration. If we postpone it, if we have to postpone it, we would not have a DJ. We could postpone the event because it's the last day the pool's open, Mike's got for, for, for this coming year is August twenty fourth. We are having it on the week before, so we could potentially reschedule the townwide celebration for a week, including the fireworks, we would not have a DJ.
Would that be the end of the world? I mean, if that, I mean, you try for the best scenario, which is to have everybody there on the seventeenth, but.
We would have to try, we, i- if, if that being the scenario, we would, we would need to come up with some alternative because it's important.
Right.
It, it is important, yeah.
It does add nicely to the flow of.
Yes.
If, but we've got several months to plan, I mean, I, I think we should try it on the seventeenth and go.
Okay, August seventeenth with townwide celebration, rain date, if, cause if townwide gets rained out, it'll be the next week.
Next week, okay.
Move that to the next week and we move townwide to the next.
Maybe we can find it.
So I'll reach out to them and ask them for an agreement for that day, this, there was no pricing included in this message, this, this was the message, so. Uh, we will get that when, when that comes around, so.
Good, yeah, it would be, we do need to know the numbers so we can plug it into the budget.
Right, yep.
The fact that it's not that really critical, very popular time of year.
Right, I was thinking, I don't know, if we really had to postpone, could we do it when the haunted, haunted walkthrough for Rutland Town?
October.
Yeah, that'd be different.
Fireworks for Halloween, cool.
Don't tell anybody, just set them off.
Maybe we'll tell the Fire Chief.
What, what could possibly go wrong? That, that late in the season, we'd run into, we might run into a little brush fire problem, because there'd be a lot of stuff on the ground, but, but that's.
You couldn't start a brush fire if you're like dependent on it.
Chase somebody for after fireworks, that's what we do.
Oh, I've got it.
Uh, and the last thing I need to ask, we uh received a message from Valerie Taylor from the Men's Select Board, she's looking for some collaboration on a request to the state.
Yeah, this is similar to what we did with our intermunicipal committee, that with the city on the, yeah, we didn't get very far, but.
You go get the same response from this, yeah.
The traffic don't drive that fast.
We, we had a perfectly lovely um collaborative effort with the city on lowering the speed limit. And now Mendon is hoping that we can join with them to do the same, what do you think?
So this is in that section must be. None of that's in the town though, right? Where they're asking, isn't that right there by uh Metal Lake Drive?
I think so, yeah, that, that was, that was the impression that I got, yeah.
I don't believe.
Yeah, but I think doesn't it go for, it goes forty five just passing people.
Yeah.
So I think they want our collaboration to lower forty from there to Town Line Road. Which for a bad section in our town's not a terrible idea.
Yeah.
The forty, the forty five all the way to the Killington line, in my opinion, is unrealistic, but.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
That's, that's their town, that's their town, if they could post it at forty five all they want, nobody's gonna drive forty five.
It is pretty congested in there and there's the, yeah.
This is the speed that is connected to Killington two forty five from fifty, so. I'm not clear on what that mean, I, maybe, so somewhere maybe where, where, where it changes now.
Yeah.
It would go down to forty five all the way to Killington, you think that?
So if you're.
They essentially want to lower all their speed limits five miles an hour.
I root for. If you're interested in talking with her, I can ask her for like, hey, can you give us a map of the road sections you have that you, where they, what they are now, what you'd like to see change, and then we can get a better idea of what she's.
Yeah, is she?
Where?
C V, C V C.
No, no.
Ends right there.
It's Town Line Road.
Yeah.
And is she asking us to lower the speed in our town, or does she just want us to support the lowering of the speed in their town?
That's what it sounds.
Or some probably both.
I think it's both.
Maybe, but that's not what it says, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
So some clarification would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, she said, we're hoping to have some discussions with each town and hopes that we can come up with a plan on how to get this started.
She should just come visit.
Do we want to invite her to a board, our next board meeting and?
We can do that, or we can rev up the intermunicipal committee.
Either are.
You and me. Um.
Either way you want to do it, you're in charge.
Yeah, well, um, if she's, if she wants to come and kind of, is she on the select board or is she there?
She is, she's with the, with the Men's Select Board, yeah.
I think she's the chairman.
Is she? Okay.
She might be.
All right, so if she wants to come and talk with us, we'd be happy to.
Problem.
Yeah.
There, I've been watching this, there's been from Rutland to Killington, there's about seven accidents since July. All of them involving fatalities, however, I'm not so sure speed was involved in any of, one of them, the last one with the motorcycle, that guy was nuts, and that speed limit's not gonna. Didn't stop in, but he's dead, so he's not gonna do that anymore.
Yeah.
Um, and there were complaints about this one particular guy that got killed on a motorcycle.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the other accidents. There was one involving a fatality involving a Volkswagen bus, a friend of mine was there when the accident happened behind him, and he said the bus wasn't capable of speeding.
Wow.
No, I think those go much over forty five.
Limit, uh, we do see the speed limits, they answer there.
Well, maybe we can ask her, give us a little background on why she thinks, why they're looking at lowering the speed limit, yeah.
There, there is also a V O T guidebook for towns to set speed limits.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know, they're talking about reducing the speed limit in front of my office, reducing it to thirty miles an hour. Come on, it'll, for a stretch of the road, that's fine, but the lower stretch.
Yeah.
Or, or the, it, it would make things worse, yeah.
Well, we're gonna hear what she has to say.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh, there is, I, I am working on a. U nine one one database update for the state, they, every year they send towns uh copies of our, of our ma- uh town in map, in various maps and. Go through it and correct errors, so there's a few errors that I found on there, um, that's, it's, it's not very difficult, we don't have very many things that are wrong, fortunately, for uh, for that. Um, and I, I did just um a few hours before the meeting, I got the. Um, review of the, the, the case by case review of, of Gleason Road from, from Trevor, so he gave me the whole, the whole breakdown of all those changes, so. I'll, I'll get that to you guys for the next meeting.
Yes, please.
Uh, and um, just like Dave doesn't like to say the W word, uh, the town report.
Oh, yes.
Uh, is gonna, is gonna be assembled in the next uh eight to ten weeks, um, so. Department head reports are going to be needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as well as a dedication and select board report, uh, and. Couple of years we've had, we've, some of the reports, some of the department head reports we get are a little. Go, go, go like a calendar year, we want to make sure we're keeping them from July of twenty two to June of twenty three, because that's the time for the report, so we're, we've, sometimes the. Dates get a little, get a little fuzzy, we won't make sure.
Fussing.
Yep, um.
Mess up Chris's fire report, you know, because, yeah, but he'll figure it out.
And then next, it won't, but, but next year he gets to brag all about the building, so it's okay.
Right.
Um, so um, I, I'm gonna send out email requests to all the department heads, but that's gonna be coming to start putting all those things together, so um.
Shows up every year at this time.
Does, doesn't it? Uh, that is, that is everything I have.
What do we dedicate the thing for your last year?
Um. Steve Seward.
Okay, yep.
And.
Yep.
I've got, I've got the rest of it there.
It's right here in the front. Yeah.
It was like, that's the wrong, that's the wrong report. That's the wrong year.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it doesn't go away, anything.
Yep.
Did who? Um, I don't know, but I, what I can do for that, I have done a list, I went back several years ago and sat in the vault and pulled out all of the town reports. And did a list of everyone who's received the town report dedication, okay, so let me get that out to you, and then you can start. Cause I prefer not to rededicate if we've already dedicated, so let me get that out to you and then you can start thinking.
That is a very secretive process, so.
Oh, it's extremely.
It is classified, top secret.
But I'm, I have an idea, but I'm open to suggestions, so here we are.
Um, request, Bill.
Yes.
For tomorrow's meeting, seeing as I can't find the highway budget sheet you gave me.
Sure.
Gave us, good.
No problem.
Okay.
Where'd I go?
Yeah, where'd I?
I, I even have one filled out for it, cause Dave already gave me his, his, his budget, so I haven't get, I can give anyone that's even filled out.
Either way, yeah, that'll be good, yeah.
So, um, well, we do have a few more things left, the rec thing, the one pager.
Mike said to disregard that, there'll be a rec committee meeting, so.
Okay.
Said, okay.
League of Cities and Towns Certificate of Coverage.
That was on the back of the grant agreement, that was last page of that, so, yeah.
There, okay.
When, um, when Mike sets the meeting.
Yeah.
Would you make sure that?
I, I will find out from him, yeah.
Just, just make sure she's notified.
No problem.
Okay, so let's see.
Not changing.
Under committee reports, we've heard from the rec committee, we've heard from the personnel committee, the finance committee, and briefly from the fire committee, and you'll be getting more information. Next week on that, action needed, we met with Lyle Jepson. Um, the Cortina, we do not have an agreement uh from the Cortina, I did email again this morning and heard nothing. Um, and let's see, next is, we did the errors and omissions for the Lister's Office. We did the emergency management appointments, we need to talk about.
E.
E, uh, boards to set compensation rate increases for twenty, twenty four, twenty five budget year.
Do you find anything other than the three point two?
I did, okay, so, here's what we, I, I ignored two things, um. One is a local nonprofit that hasn't raised its raise wages at all for quite a number of years, so I ignored that, on the other hand, there was the thirty.
Was that a local or a statewide nonprofit?
That was a, that was a local.
Okay.
There was a United Auto Workers um agreement that was just ratified for a thirty three percent wage increase, I ignored that one too.
Is that over a year or over several years?
Well, that's what I couldn't.
I think it's the length of the contact is three or four years.
It's still way too much.
It's, it's, okay, so here's what I have.
Costs so much money.
For you could, for those folks who like to, um, last year, just to put things in perspective, we had a cost of living increase of eight point seven percent. And that was reflected in those of us who get social security, we increased wages by six percent, okay, we didn't go all the way up to eight point seven. So by comparison, this year, the COLA increase is three point two percent, all right? So that's where we are this year, um, I checked with a, uh, another nonprofit uh with uh seven to ten employees. They did a five percent increase. Um, the, I went online and checked, there was a story about the Vermont State Employees, they did. Back to back two percent increases, two percent last year, two percent this year, and, and they did a thousand dollar lump sum payment to each employee in January of. Twenty three and again in January of twenty four, so you can't really, so that's like two percent plus, all right? Um, the City of Rutland, they're discussing their budget, they had, and this is not employment, you know, compensation increase, but they have an overall. Seven point six percent proposed budget increase, but that's not limited to salary, that's just across the board. Um, so that's what I have, what have you folks discovered out there?
I didn't do too much more research on it that, but I was thinking, um, somewhere around four, which was my thoughts, we did. We did six, we did six last, and based on your information, this even comes out a little better, we did six last year. Um, and they said the cost of living was eight last year, and then this year they're saying three, so that's eleven, if we did. In the two years, if we, we did six last year, and if we do four this year, we'll almost be there, um, individual things, my, my, um. One of my family, extended family says that a pair of gloves that he bought at Nobles was like nineteen dollars last year, and this year they're twenty eight. Which doesn't reflect four percent or six percent, it's more like fifty percent, so individual things have gone up there, but I, I don't know, four wouldn't be a good number, I don't know. What anything else could be higher or lower, something we can compress, I just thought we ought to do, you know.
Anybody else got any numbers from employers that you want to?
Kurt, what do you think?
I can move it.
Four?
Four, yeah, me too.
That's where my gut was going based on all these numbers.
That's kind of where my discount led right to.
Yeah, four percent, four percent across the board salary increase, okay.
No, and that'll give all our department heads.
Smack the gavel.
Oh, we should do, I don't know.
Do we have to vote on it?
Let's put it out there as a motion, and then they build your budget around it, motion by Joe, seconded by Kurt.
Sure.
Four percent salary increases for Rutland Town employees.
Yeah.
Yep, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, motion carries, good, um, so that takes care of E. Um, executive session, there are three things I would like to, and these are gonna be very brief, it's just kind of an update.
I was hoping we'd get a bit of it.
I know, but still, maybe we'll get out by eight, um, so.
Tell me.
One is a uh executive session reasons, um, land sale, uh, the. Um, some personnel matters and a contract negotiations.
So move, second.
Motion's made and seconded, no discussion on this, all in favor, please say aye.
Wait.
Aye, motion carries, we're in executive session.
Oh, yeah, and if you want, I'll, I'll just raise one other.
Out of executive session, well, it shouldn't have been, I mean, so this part, if this is some last comment about how to allocate budgets, that's not in executive session.
This is about the nine one one stuff.
Oh, okay, well, it's uh twenty past eight, we're out of executive session, is there any further business to be discussed?
Yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you, everybody.